Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and your mercy. We pray for those, Father, who may be in harm's way this evening. Build a protective wall around them, care for them, lift them up. Be good to them, my Father. Just have your way tonight, forgive us where we fall short. Let us say and do the things that bring glory and honor to your name, or we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are here, all except Mandy. If you haven't signed in, please do. Okay, we have in front of us the minutes. January and February. Do I have to hear a motion to accept? Do you want us to do them separately? Okay. Is there a motion to accept January 9, 2023 minutes?
I will.
Motion made by Earl, is there a second? Second by Steve. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Is everyone able to go through the February minutes? Is there a motion to accept the February 13, 2023 minutes as written?
Motion.
Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
I will.
Second by Earl. Is there any other question? All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, our financial review, Sheila, anyone want us to do that?
Again, you have a copy of the monthly financial report. I ran it through Friday noting that there's only $1.2416 in the general fund. It still has to last us until June settlement comes in. The other funds are doing pretty good, the negative balances, which is usually your last page or your 9,000 series. Those are all grants and those are reimbursements and will be coming in. Hopefully soon that they'll be zeroed out and a couple of them are done when they are zeroed out. But other than that, all the funds are looking good.
Have we made any progress on with the ARPA funds to zero out those? I mean, that's in the works, isn't it?
Those will be presented to you at your April meeting.
Okay.
And I'll take them to the county, or the commissioners in the first week and then to the council. And again, we have to move a million dollars or 972,000 total in from the ARPA over to pay for the two negative balances. But we should have a pretty good handle on which ones we're going to move over and we want your guys' approval as well as the commissioners. And again, I'm assuming it's just the two negative balances, not the full million dollars. I mean, I can't see moving that much out of there if we don't have to. So, but we will have a complete list at the April meeting.
Great. Okay, let's move on to our business. Health Department employee confirmation.
She should have gave you confirmation somewhere in your calendar. And I have never done this before, so you may have to. She came to you at the February meeting asking for the employee and you guys approved it based on her estimated, your last page that she had given you on the salary amount.
Mm-hmm.
Not knowing what hourly rate that she used, I also printed you out this 2023 salary confirmation.
And that is the rate I used.
And that, so the appropriation will not need to be that much because you won't have the full 26 pays in it. Same thing with insurance and those. So basically, you're just confirming that hourly rate. She already has the funds in her 4911 fund in the contract services to transfer into regular salary and payroll line items. So it's just really confirming that hourly rate.
So the hourly rate is the base rate right here, the $20 and point one five six. We have a motion to approve the hourly rate.
And that's just the same as the current position.
Right.
It matches that.
And it's what we talked about in past last meeting.
Again, you just need to acknowledge that it is the rate that she had used and whatever the total amount of funds that's needed for the salary for the remainder of the year and for benefits needs to be transferred into appropriate line items.
So we need to make a, are we needing to make a motion to?
You can add the transfer to, it's all being done together. You've already approved it at the February meeting, so you've done that. We just need to get them into the salary line items. And she did use the correct dollar hourly rate that was there. So basically, you're just giving her permission to move the money into the payroll line items.
Okay.
Because the hourly has been confirmed.
So essentially, we're going to need to figure out the balance of the year for the pay portion, FICA, perf, that kind of thing, and then transfer that amount at that point.
And no one's been hired for this position yet.
Well, she's a contracted employee. She's just going to roll over into the position.
So the appropriate amount will come out of the contract line. How quick are we talking? This particular immediate type of thing?
She's already, what, started with John and had her, um, I guess her onboarding in the auditor's office. So we're just waiting for this to go so we can actually start.
So we've got 42 weeks left in the year, essentially. So about 80% of the salary would be needed.
And I want to remind everybody, this is the position we talked about last month where she's going to be shadowing John and when he, you know, decides that he wants to retire or cut back or whatever, she will, I mean, essentially just be able to transition into that and which is very important because he has a lot of knowledge that is in his head and not written down and it's not something that he can just move in a matter of, you know, weeks or months. So, and that, we've already approved the position. We just need to approve the salary and transfer, right?
Yeah.
And then what about the health benefits package cost? Is there, does the 90 days apply since she was technically contracted? So she's kind of starting fresh, okay. So, you know, we got 42 weeks. And then there'd be another 12 to 13 weeks of further delay. Let's say 12, so there's 30 weeks. So about 58% of the annual benefits cost. That was 7,500.
74, 73.
So 7,500, okay. So we need 4,350 for the health benefit. And I'm using the term health loosely, the benefits package. That includes some other things besides health. So 4,350 for that. The wages would be 33,500. Perf would be 37,52. And FICA Medicare would be 25,63. So whatever those add up to, we'd want to think about the transfers and do the math on that.
Yes, just a where your transfer sheet, I think, 4911, 37,000 to the, to 34.
A little bit rounded, you know, they're not exact, but it's going to be enough, I would think.
And it'll roll over if you, yeah, just because it's in the line. So those are the transfer amounts that she needs. The other thing, when she called the other day, just as a reminder to the council people and there's a few department heads, when you guys were doing your raises to everybody in December, we kept the payrolls, the correct amounts in, I believe EMS, Health Department, Cessar's Office all had to make cuts somewhere in the rest of their budget because we couldn't advertise higher. Those will need additional appropriations. I believe she only has like 21 or 60 dollars left in insurance. When you're taking 662 dollars out every month, it's going to go away pretty quick. So we'll get those prepared on those that need the additional appropriations to bring back to you guys because we need to get those done because they give up money that they need and that particular one is the general fund on that one. Actually, they were all, except the three of them. So EMS and Dusty, there's a, I don't remember which line item. EMS give up, Kathleen's was like 40 some dollars. So those are minor amounts. So, but we need to get that back in there so that their line items aren't running in the red. So we'll try to have that ready at the April meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we need to make a motion then now before the, or is there something?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the transfers and the amounts.
Okay.
Because they're different series, so they're already done.
I'll go ahead and make a motion then that in Fund 4911, per the Health Department's request and previous approval to convert a contracted individual to a regular employee position that follows the same structure as the health sanitarian, that we transfer from contract services 33,500 to regular wages, 37,52 to perf, 25,63 to FICA, and 4,350 to group health benefits.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second? A second, second by Amy. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, auditor one, you guys had approved up to 35,000 for the position. Wasn't sure that, because it did not include benefits in the 74, 73 or rounded into the 7,500 and stuff. We went through numbers today. The 1950 an hour is correct and with the benefits and because it's a 90-day phrase period or not to start, that 35,000 will be the correct amount in order to advertise and that'll come back at the next meeting.
Okay, that will be good. So we need a motion to advertise that?
It was already.
Already made.
It was done in February.
So there's no, nothing that needs to be done.
Just confirmed.
All right. All right, from the line. Okay, time management and pay, Paycor payroll review. Are you?
Yes.
Okay.
The commissioners have asked me to kind of give you another recent synopsis of the Paycor system and the concerns that the county has and how this might help address those concerns. First off, it's been a couple of year process, I have a part of it. It's been a couple of year process trying to find some way to help with time management and to lower the burden of payroll on different departments. Issues that have been identified include excessive time each department takes to manually input all payroll data, significant hours dedicated to that endeavor which equates to significant cost to the county. There is not a true HR department to take care of onboarding new hires, benefits, FMLA tracking, and more. There are many legal concerns that I would have with benefits being done correctly and with the possibility of compliance with the Oral Care Act. Some sort of HR system would help with that. The timekeeping system is manual. There is a need for a customizable system that would aid different departments in their different needs. The way one department would track things may be different from another based on like on-call issues, services and things like that. Another legal concern is ghost employment issues. And this can actually go both ways. One, that employee is putting down more time than they're actually working. Or the vice can, person can be ensuring that the employee is not getting paid for all of their time. There's been considerable litigation on that aspect of it where employees, when they leave disgruntled, say that they worked excessive hours and didn't get paid for those. So a good time management system would help with that. There was also mentioned a concern of how the payroll actually gets to the people's state bank. And I won't say what that is, but that system seems to be kind of risky. A different system should be considered. Paycor is a comprehensive employee payroll, time management, and human resource system. They summarize their solution as follows. Payroll, tax filing, and ACA reporting will be done through one system that is smart enough to recognize security permissions. This will also eliminate room for error with the system offering checks and balances to ensure integrity in the process. A system of record to allow supervisors access to data and pay rates for their employees easily and finally giving the employees ownership of their basic information. Paycor, as far as security, they have 30,000 clients nationwide, which includes half of the top 10 banks. This system has been vetted by some of the most reputable institutions. Integrated payroll and timekeeping, customizable reports. You can get reports based on a criteria you want to ask for. The information is in there. If you want to know in April how many people had overtime, it's easy to determine that and to track those kind of costs. If there was a special event or disaster that happened, the cost of that could be drawn out of that system as well pretty easily. There was a question of whether the, sorry, whether the Paycor system would be compatible with the LOUD system. And it is, they are telling us by using Excel spreadsheets and/or a CSV file. They're able to integrate with LOUD. HR is a big benefit. There's access to a live support center. So if you have a real-time question, you can call and you get a real-time HR person to help you with that. That also can be a big benefit on the legal side of things. They even have abilities to assist with employee handbooks, job descriptions. I know commissioners have wanted to look at the personnel manual and get it updated. They can definitely provide assistance with that. There's a number of training avenues that can be taken. Live training, recorded webinars, e-learning, different ways to learn the system. One of the things, I guess personally, that I think would be nice for employees, it allows employees and managers to use a mobile app to get to their information. You know, they, all of their payroll information, time information would be available to them from an app. The funding could be, would be, commissioners had indicated from the ARPA funds. So this would not take any of the budget of the county directly. It would be paid for through ARPA. It is an eligible ARPA expense because it is stringlining administrative tasks and the increased accountability with it. The process includes an appropriation by the county council, which is what commissioners had approved the third meeting to request. Then we'll approve of a contract with the county commissioners. The cost of the system, the first year would be 32,700. So that would be, you get appropriations for the ARPA funds. After that, there would be, well, the second year would be 35,780. The 32,7 is actually a promotional discount, which basically eliminates all the initial startup fees and it even gives a discount into the normal fees. The net return on investment, they calculate. Again, they have 30,000 clients that they work with to try to turn these savings with time management and workforce management. The first year, the savings to the county could be 83,156 and over 85,000 in the second year. So that's net, that's after you deduct what the cost of the system is for these savings. So we, again, commissioners have been approached by numerous county officials, by numerous departments indicating that they need some assistance like this. And so they would like for the council to provide an appropriation so that they can move forward with the contracting of the services.
Okay, when we, when we talked about, when this was presented to us last, last month, we were under the assumption that we were going to look, this was just, Paycor was just going to be one of the different companies that we were going to look at and we were going to look at different options. That's not really happened. We've just kind of, I mean, it's been focused on Paycor. There's a lot of, I know there are a lot of concerns on my end as well as some different, some of our different ones on the council of how, I mean, they say it's integrated with LOUD, but it sounds, talking with, talking with the auditor's office, it's not totally integrated with LOUD. It's going to actually cause them to have more time spent than what they normally would. That's a big concern to me because I don't want to put more work on, on the auditor's office and that's already there. It's supposed to help alleviate that instead of, plus, we were just given some information that I haven't even been able to share with everybody on the council about the different payroll and different time management that has been used by the different counties in Indiana. I think there's a lot of different options. There's a lot of things that I feel like we need to discuss before we move forward. I've got a lot of concerns. I would like the CS table this until we can, you know, look at all the options and make sure it's something that's going. I think it's very, I think it's the consensus of opinion that we need something. I mean, I, that is definitely, I mean, we all agree on that. It's just what is the best way to move forward for the county as well as, you know, best taxpayer money spent. And I know it's, they're wanting to do it through ARPA, but that's still money that could be going for something else if we could make, I mean, a savings. So it's all of these things that are really concerning to me. Nick?
I sat in a meeting last Thursday. The lady presented this to us. I wasn't sold on it for the fact that she could not guarantee that it would integrate in with the LOUD system. And that was one of the reasons why we had already voted on it two years ago and then it fell by the wayside. They said it would work if the auditor staff would download. I, you know, you'd have to talk to the auditor there, but it was a lot of material that had to be downloaded from her employees into the system to make it workable. I agree too. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this until we get further information because there's others out there that I think we ought to listen to or look at before we make this decision.
So motion's been made by Nick.
What kind of time, what's the LOUD system? Explain that. What does it do?
LOUD is our current county financial, which is what provides you all of your numbers as far as what your balances are and breaks it down by department and funds and line items each month. They also have a payroll or a time management system and that is what I emailed you guys over the weekend, that they give us a quote on what it would be. That was just.
Yeah, just a quick point of order. We have a motion on the floor and there has to be action on that first. I'll go ahead and second that, but it's, that's only if Nick, one moment. That's only if Nick, it's postponing, not tabling, because tabling's indefinite. And I think if we are to reconsider this at our next meeting, okay. Want to make sure we're on it. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Okay, so anyway, that was just sent out and his suggestion was to start slow with just time management or a clock system of something and progress if we went farther or picked up anything else that they would offer. I think, again, we all agree a time clock is absolutely needed no matter what we do, whether it's an employee, two employees and a time clock or if you go with the companies. or if you go with the companies. It is very specifically, and again, Andy Lau, I have in writing from Andy, that it will not integrate. If we go with Paycor, it will not integrate into their system. I know that, that the commissioners have received something different, but I received an email as well that says that it is not. They do take Excel and CSV files on, on some issues, but they, not with payroll. So, so that would mean that the staff would be doing whatever the process is with Paycor. And even Paycor said herself more than once that it would not. That is what the reps at Hearon said. Some of you were there, Joel was here. It was agreed and her saying it would be manual data entry. So difference in uploading files and getting the data to it. I'm, I'm not discouraging one, one company or another. It's just if we're going to spend the time to do something, I don't want to do it more than once.
Right.
I want to, you know, is, is it needed? And this all started with an email about a time management system, about another company that we were supposed to have come in and give a presentation and it's progressed from there.
It definitely has never been allowed to come in.
They have not been contacted or requested to come in either. So I think in fairness of the whole process and because we are going to be spending a lot of money, that we should at least listen and, and make sure. And, and again, we're getting conflicting stories because their own reps at Hearon said it was, have to be manual data entry. So I, I, I just want something done. We're, we're two years from where we were and we're still having gain. And these are issues and concerns that have been there for years. You know, if, if you don't have all the components that you're supposed to have or you're doing things. There was a statement that was made in the last meeting. Actually, Andy Wood had asked, would this stop? Would this alleviate the excessive amount of buildup of time? I, I see being able to monitor it better. That goes back to the department heads. That goes back to the system of being able to make sure that they're watching what their employees are doing. And I'm seeing heads shaking. So this is everybody together trying to get this fixed. We all agree the system is broke. We all agree we need to, it's, it's not totally the auditor's fault that things aren't, that we don't have time clocks or that we don't have HR. So, you know, is the best fix two employees and a time clock? If there's time systems out there, we heard, I believe it was Donna McElroy at one of the meetings, that they use Teams, which is a free time system and a computer and some things. So I think there's more things out there to be looking at to make sure that we're progressing to the right thing. We just need to listen to them.
Right. And my concern is, I mean, what Sheila gave us, and not everybody's got to see this, there isn't one county government in Indiana that uses Paycor and that concerns me. So I think there's a lot of things that we need to look into and let's call for a vote. So all those in favor?
Well, I will, I do want to interject if I may.
I'm sorry.
And I, forgive me because I'm a little late to the new game here because I was not here for February. The last time that this particular discussion had occurred and specific to this particular company was back in 2021. And I know at the time, there was a lot of diligence done then, getting into the weeds, the details, the nuts and bolts. And at that time, it didn't appear to be something that was going to work. And so it kind of died. And so if it is something that's going to be brought back up and given fair consideration, I, I think we do need to do our diligence. This may be the best solution available. It may not be. And considering the amount of things that are tied into this, because this isn't just one thing. This is a host of things that touch on some very critical operational parts to the organization. I think we need to give it our due diligence. And I just need more time myself. That's, that's, that's the easy excuse for me. And I think we need to give everybody a fair shake on this.
And there's, there may be other, I mean, there's so many different options that we can look at.
And the other thing too is, you know, with any complex situation, whether it's our wage structure or human, you know, policies and procedures or whatever it is, it's really tough to take a very large bite. I mean, let's be honest with, with each other. There's a lot of cooks in the kitchen. There's a lot of things going on. And quite frankly, you know, we should probably think about doing smaller steps so that we can ensure we're not leaving anything out. We're also making sure that we can implement things properly and reevaluate them correctly before we move on or make a very large commitment to a package. And with anything, I think we also need to do a little more work on identifying what the actual problems are. What are the real examples that are occurring in the organization? From a department head level, employee level up to auditor and so on. And say, okay, this, these are our problems. Now we need someone to provide us with some solutions to those problems. Rather than have any one particular vendor, whether it's LOUSS or this company or whatever, come to us saying this is, these are the solutions, but we're not exactly sure what the problems all are and if that's going to match up properly, if that makes sense. So I, that's why I'm kind of in support of postponing it, just to give it a little more time. I think there's no harm in that, in my opinion.
Right, I'm sure I called.
Right. So all those in favor of postponing?
I wanted to talk that, to Sheila just a minute. I'm sorry. You, you think that Ginger would still have about the same amount of work if we went with Paycor?
We would because of the way that she presented it, that there's the manual data entry. We're not giving anything if it has to be double entry. That, and that kind of is explained a little bit on, on LOUSS, ins and stuff too. So needing that second position in there is, that person would still be dependent on, on what, if we went with part of their package that they offered or all of it and that's for anybody that we listen to. There are still going to be the insurance. There's still going to be the new hires. There's still going to be the backup. And that backup position for all of the staff in there is desperately needed. So that validates the, the new employee. And, and I still feel that the workload is still going to be there for two people.
Okay. One thing, the one thing is, so we've been talking about for two years because I've been here watching for the last year and it was kind of a lot of something. But how long are we going to postpone this? Next month, six months, 10 months, two years?
I think, I think we've, you know, talked about, I mean, what the, the motion is that we're postponing it till next month. So it's not indefinitely. It's not like, like you said, tabling it. It's postponing it to next month. And we are all ready to do something. I mean, since this has been on the table and it is very needful and it's something that we're, we definitely need to do, I think we're, we're committed on getting some answers before next.
Well, have you got something scheduled for other?
We need to schedule something, I mean, that I feel like that we have different.
Other options?
Right, right. But we, first we need to, we need to vote on, on the motion that's on.
I know.
Well, and who's going to schedule the meetings? Who's going to call other companies? These are all part of the question of postponing it.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to do anything with those. Postponing, it seems like it's just something we're not, we don't have all the answers to postpone.
I know my, myself, I'm committed on, on fine, I mean, scheduling and stuff and getting this done, but is this something that we do? Do we, I mean, or is that something that the commissioners?
It's going to be commissioners are going to have a role in this. Our county attorney, the auditor, payroll clerk, deputy, department heads. There's really nothing that changes from the fact that it's already began. I think that the process needs to play out. I think it needs to continue. So we're not starting from ground zero here. We're, we've already got a lot of components to this, but I think it needs more development. And that's where the postponement comes into play. We need to make sure we do our diligence. We have our list. And the other thing I didn't mention earlier is there might need to be some policy drafts that go with this. And I think that's where maybe some advice from council may be needed to back up whatever things end up being implemented. We talked about time management and, you know, how are you going to govern, you know, card use? Is it, is it wireless app? You know, what if someone gave their phone to someone else to check in? You know, there's those kind of policy-related things that have to be addressed too. And we don't want to leave that out. So, and that's going to take some time.
So it won't be completed next month, but it will be in the process.
Hopefully, I mean, well, definitely, next, next month we will have answers.
I'll make a statement and correct you if I'm wrong. What we're going to find out is that anybody that we choose, whether it's Paycor, does not play good with LOUSS. Well, I, I have not been presented a thing. All I hear is about the new ideas, the new, the new companies. And I can assure you myself, Gary Burr and Bob Curry have never been brought another option. So if there's options out there.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay. This is our meeting. What I'm going to say is Sheila did come up with, it's called what, Write Stuff? And that was presented, but it did not, nobody followed through with that. So.
Nobody followed through.
There's, you're, you're talking different levels of stuff. We started out with time management. That was the original with this Write Stuff and I believe something on demand. Those, those are the two major ones.
Yeah, tend on demand.
So that was a time management ends and things, whether it's time clocks or however the process is. That was the original discussion. Then Paycor came back into the picture. I think by the dividing it out, Paycor and Lau are probably the only two companies that do offer, there's, there's a half a dozen that, you know, they're like one in the state. There's six or eight of them that there's only one other company. So you probably are looking at Lau and Paycor. Paycor has presented a packet as well as Lau give us one over the weekend. Not enough time to look at it and consider it. Paycor is not a contract. Lau is a contract. That would be a commissioner's decision to be a contract. So if that's, you know, who they would chose, you know, if they want Lau to come in, if they want Paycor to come back in and do presentations. If you're requesting to have them come in and do it, we can make contact. If the commissioners want to have it come in or, or, you know, they have their meeting that they're going to have to decide, you know, we presented Paycor, this is what we wanted to do. We're, we're not going to listen or address anything else. I, I can set up meetings. I can call and ask and try and get them in here, but it still goes back to the commissioners, especially if it's a contract. So, and then it would come back to the council for the funding.
I just, I know that my concern is I do not want to, to add more work to the auditor's office that is already, that you guys are already having to deal with. And to, there's nothing that I have heard from Paycor that, that alleviates that concern. So, you know, when I say options that I have heard of, I mean, we talked about just time clocks. We've talked about, you know, Donna from, you know, using Teams. We've talked about, I mean, those are, there are different, different things that I think we all need to look at and not just zero in on the one company that is not going to integrate with our financial system.
I have a question. Two years ago when we had this, the meeting, I think it was at the highway department. But weren't we told then that it wouldn't integrate two years ago?
Yeah, and it's still.
And now, but, but I mean, who do you believe? I mean, Paycor's saying it will, while she's saying it's not.
Yeah, but Paycor is even now, is still saying that you're going to, they're going to have to double.
Oh, I, I totally agree. And, but I mean, it's, it's almost like it hasn't really changed.
Right.
For two years, you know, it's still the same information. So I don't know what a, I mean, Lau's going to come in and present and say, no, I, 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 who do you believe?
And I hate to, and I don't think we should continue speculating one way or the other. Let's, let's give it a fair shake. And, you know, everybody may be wrong. Everybody may have a little bit of right. I don't know.
But it was like that.
But let's give it a look. But you're right, two years ago that was a concern, but, but we gave it a try. And I, that was the, the thing is that we thought that might be a good solution and we gave it a good faith effort. But then it, it, once you got into the nuts and bolts, then you start to discover what may work and what doesn't. And that's where it really matters, is where the rubber meets the road. And so we just need to be very careful and make sure that whatever decision ends up being made is a good, solid decision.
Agreed.
Warrants some extra time to give a review of that.
Agreed. So we have a motion, are we ready now to, ready? So all those in favor of postponing till next month? All right, motion carried.
Thank you for helping.
So are we going to have people come in and present?
I would like to see that.
And who does that?
Anton said that maybe we should designate some programs first.
Yes.
I think.
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
From my point of view.
We don't need any more meetings, if that's.
Time sheets, hand-written time sheets is probably the biggest waste of taxpayer money you'll ever see.
Do what, what you said?
Hand-written time sheets.
Yeah, and we're all in agreement that something, it needs to change and needs to be different. And we need to, I mean.
And that's not counting the errors.
Well, how about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Four to five or, you know, not eight to four, eight to four, eight to four. And then the department head or the supervisor has to sign off. The department head has to sign off. I can't imagine what happens at the sheriff's department, how many people have to look at.
Man, that's, that's, that's a challenging one there.
Chicken scratches is identified last time as chicken scratches.
Lauren, I used to, I used to work for a company that had those, those cards you swiped and you came and went from the building and there you go. But it's not that simple. It, to me, it seems simple, just boom and it's done and I don't have to think about it. But on the back end, you still had a lot of work, a lot of policies, a lot of people involved. Whether you have a third-party vendor or not, or a combination of the two, which is what this would involve, there, there's still a lot more to it that requires some thought. And I think that we just need to give it the appropriate amount of work.
But I'm, I'm with everybody. I don't want to just, just, you know, to postpone this and nothing be done for a month. I'm going to see some, some answers.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Library board appointment.
How are you, Ginger?
I'm good, how are you all?
Oh, good.
I think three people that I think would all be excellent. Just kind of left it up to you, unless you want a confirmation.
So what?
Jennifer Abel had put in her resignation and that makes it another thing.
So Joanna Ali? And Tiffany Lookback? And it's Susan Holder. They're all good.
Yeah, they are, yes.
What did you do?
Good bunch.
I would be happy with any of them. I have to say though, Joanna came to my office, sat down with you, wanted to know what all was involved, seemed really eager. And she's, we're really looking for someone who's ready to devote time to us. And it's kind of been a problem the last year. And I think she would do that. I think she would make us a priority. So if I had to pick one, not knowing her all that well, I think she would be the one I would choose.
I think your recommendation would have a lot of weight. And so, I mean, any three of these would not have been mentioned if they weren't good in some way or another. And I know them. So yes, they'd be good choices. But on the recommendation of the director, I think that is something we should take into account.
Agreed.
Right, I agree.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Joanna Ali as a member of the Owen County Public Library Board.
Confirmed by Ian Tunnell for a second.
Second by Pearl.
Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thanks. She's got the forms in your room, really great. And you will take them, get them, then notarize. If you, if you, I mean, she, I, they'll go through it and all she has to do is sign them and write in Joanna. Do you know her? They're all good. We have kept them, but they got in April.
So just, I just need to sign.
My name on, on the appointment. And then you sign on the far left side. I'll place this landmark with the list.
Okay.
I tried to make it as easy as possible.
So I mean, I need to. So, I mean, I need to put. Okay, I'm in here.
I filled out everything except for who it was and then policy signature.
Okay, so the little asterisks are her name that I need to fill in. Um, do you want me to do that or, okay. And then I sign, what, right here?
On the left side, I believe it is.
Okay, right here, okay. It's okay.
Then you give me a copy of it back after it's notarized.
Make sure I got your name right. Do you have to put both to her or one of you and my dad?
She needs, she gets both of them and then she'll have them notarized and recorded and then give me one up on the back. Thank you.
Additional appropriation request.
Hello, Judge Hamlin.
Hey.
How are you?
Good, buddy. So before we get down to brass tacks, I just have to say I think we have a wonderful library.
There you go.
There's a lot going on down there.
Sure.
So the easy, maybe we can start with the easier, easier of the two. The additional appropriation request from, to just move money from Court Interpreter Grant Fund into our interpreter line. And that's just to pay for, we've got to use some interpretation, we just need to.
We got a grant, it fills in what was needed. I'm going to make a motion that we proceed in making the appropriation. And you said it was from the grant fund?
Yes, the Court Interpreter Grant Fund.
Do you have a fund number for that?
Uh, it looks like it's one thousand, zero, two, three, two, three, eight, zero, zero, zero.
So that's the general fund?
Oh, excuse me.
The thousand, yeah.
The fund, it just says fund and court interpreter. I don't, fill out the additional appropriation request.
Taking it from the cash balance where it was receiveded in and putting it into that line item that they do.
So it was receiveded into the general fund now?
Yes.
Ah, there you go. So I'm going to make a motion that we appropriate from Fund One Thousand, the amount of $300 for court interpreters.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
All right, thank you. I apologize for my confusion on that. I thought that those might be a separate line.
Second to that again. Nick?
Yeah.
Thank you. When's the last time we had court equipment? It's been a while.
Oh, well, I'll tell you, it's been a while, but I'm frustrated with this situation. So we have recording equipment in the courtrooms and the recording equipment in this two courtroom, we've just been having persistent issues with it. It messes up, it freezes, it won't work at all sometimes. And I had kind of been operating under the assumption that it was based on the fact that the computers were so old. And, you know, I'd kind of been told that to a degree. And so I wrote a grant to the Supreme Court and I got all of our computers replaced. So the Supreme Court has paid for all the court reporters' computers to be replaced and both of the court room computers to be replaced. That has not solved the problem. And basically, we had somebody from Word Systems come when we installed the new computers and the person from Word Systems said, well, it's because the mixer is so old that it's no longer supported, like the, I don't know exactly, I'm not a tech savvy person, but basically the software's not supported anymore. So every time your operating system updates, it causes problems and that's why it's just kind of buggy. And so they have, they wrote us a couple of different quotes. The first quote was just for a completely different recording equipment system and it was like $16,000. I assumed that nobody would be interested in that. To be frank, I'm not really interested in changing because it would use a different, we use a company called Fourth Record for the actual maintenance. It's like the software that we use to maintain the recordings and this would have been a different company. And this, which would have been kind of a big to do anyway. But this was just to update the recording equipment in the courtroom. What I will say is, this was a, this is a complete update. And so I don't think that we need to replace all four microphones. And that was a pretty good chunk of the expense, expense. I think there are a couple of microphones that are not functioning well. But I don't know that we need, it's not going to be quite this much. I don't think we need four microphones. And then the, that condenser boundary microphone, and I apologize, I should have checked with our court administrator before this evening. But I think that's actually like a flat microphone that we use during jury trials that, I don't think that there's a problem with that either. So we probably don't need $6,600 in total. We probably need, you know, to be safe, maybe a thousand less than that. Because I think the microphones that we have, we don't need to replace all of them. But the mixer has just caused consistent problems and a lot of frustration to the court staff. And like I said, I thought it was, it was the computers and just the computers being old. But I, I have addressed that problem and that has not seemed to fix it, so. I'm happy to ask any other questions. Oh, the other thing I was going to mention is we got these probably when the court, when we started the second court. We bought this equipment, so 2015, so quick math, eight years ago. You know, in terms of technology, eight years is kind of a long time. But I was sort of frustrated because I'm like the person that would have a tin can tied to a string as opposed to an iPhone if I could. But that seemed to me like for as expensive as this stuff is, I think it should last more than eight years. But this is like kind of, I think of, you know, things just become obsolete in the technology world, I guess. So that's where we're at.
I think that I, I mean, I would rather see this kind of expense made from something like a Riverboat type fund rather than the county general, because it's one time, it's not every year. And again, the last time we did it was eight, nine years ago, probably.
Yeah, and I actually think Circuit One, they had to replace their mixer somewhat more recently, but they were able to just kind of walk within the existing budget and move some stuff around. And I'm a little bit worried about doing that this year because I think that we're going to use our jury money for sure. I've got two jury trials and two months coming up, so.
That's just my, my opinion on maybe the source of the money.
So what is the total you actually think you need yet?
I mean, I think an additional $5,500 would be totally safe.
You could do up to the $6,600. And then at the public hearing that it has to come back to for the additional appropriation in April, you could give the exact amount out of what you've covered. And your current cash balance is $195,802.77 in Riverboat.
Fund number on that.
$1191.
So unless there's any objection, I'm going to make a motion that we advertise appropriation from Fund 1191 for $6,600 for purposes of the court reporting equipment.
You're going to do up to or?
Up to $6,600.
And all of them have better information about those microphones when I come back.
So motion made? Is it second?
Motion.
Second by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
All right, Jane McCollum, I'm Marcy and it's not here. Yesterday I came and heard.
I, I would like to hear from Marcy on something like this and.
She told me, when I was on the paper, and her concern was since the comprehensive plan had, I mean, since it took a while to get that through. And she's having a hard time finding companies that will take on this. And so she didn't want to delay it until she could be here. So, I mean, that's, that was her.
Is there some, Madam Chair, is there someone here from the chamber?
I don't see anybody.
Then I make a motion that we postpone this. I mean, I'd like to hear somebody here. I mean, this is $47,000, if that's, am I reading right?
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars? I think some of us might need an explanation for that.
Yeah, I'm going to second that.
Okay.
I mean, it's really the fair thing to do. I know that there may be some time stuffed, but, you know, it's a big project and it'd be nice if everybody was also up to speed on it and exactly what it involves. Because some, not every one of us has been involved in, in planning and building department stuff. So it'd be good to make sure everybody's on the same page with, of a presentation.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, let's see.
Back up.
Do you believe this is a little more straightforward? So the commissioners have approved a record to request form, a record to request form and guidelines in December. The county council, a statistical body at the county, needs to approve the fee schedule that is used. And so that's why I'm here this evening to ask the county council establish a fee schedule for the public records request. Public records request was one of the first things that Mike got on board, that they said that needed to be, something needed to be done. And so, you know, prepare a form and guidelines for that. There has been complaints in public access counselor on Owen County, the different departments. And I have spoken at length with the public access counselor. And all of those complaints were either unfounded or moved at the time they were brought up. So he, he told me that he has no red flags that Owen County is doing anything wrong. So, and having this form in place really helps. It makes the requester be very specific on what they want. So that this has to be described with particularity. And so that's the purpose of the form. For a fee schedule, there's two different sections in the proposed ordinance. The first is kind of the general from, you know, if you go to the building department or you go to the health department and you have copies. The Indiana statute allows black and white copies to be 10 cents and colored copies to be 25 cents. And if the documents are to be certified, that certification fee is typically maxed out at that $5. There is another way to calculate the copy cost. And that is by going and determining exactly how much it costs to make a copy. Which would be extremely labor intensive. And, but it says you either do that or you use these numbers. And so I recommend.
So these are kind of a standard default type of cost for allowable costs for that kind of printing and copying?
Yeah, this is, this is by statute, allowing.
Yeah, and that was one of my questions. Is it one sided, two sided? Is there a difference? And should that be distinguished in the ordinance?
It is per page, so it's generally, it's one sided when you get it.
Should we make that maybe a little clearer or, do you suggest we make that clear in the ordinance?
It's per page, a two sided page is two pages. It's up to you. I mean, there would be aptly to.
I could see some arguments on that. People, everybody comes in and be like, well, it's front and back. But, I mean, we could print singles in every case, but if you have a double to a single, you know, I could just see it being, you know.
If you certify it. Is the certification, is that per the department that they're asking from? Like, is it my CEO or who, you know?
Whatever records are requested from you, you would certify those records as true and accurate copies.
So it's per the department?
If they go to a different department, the request would be different, then that's a different certification fee. Because you can't certify another department's records.
Yes, I have a question. Counsel, is this additional cost, if you go to the clerk's office or to the recorder's office, it already charges?
Yes, and that's in section two. The recorder's office fees are per the Indiana Code 36-2-7-10. So they, it is specific by statute what their fees would be. That's why I call this a general section. For the clerk's office, it's Indiana Code 33-37-5. And also there was an ordinance in 2021 that established EMS medical record fees for Owen County. So those would be a specific. Kind of trying to determine what, how oversized records and electronic copies are calculated really depends on what the effort is to do it. And so I put in the ordinance that that would be established by each specific department. And those would be tied more to what is the actual cost. You know, when we send this out, it costs $3 or.
So you're saying clerk, if she would want to, she could not charge us any? You're saying you're linking it up to the elected official over the office, is that right?
I've never had them not charge a fee, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that.
So you're saying this is on top, they have to keep track of all this money on top of already all that they keep tracking. I was clerk for four years. I, and, you know, we have a lot of money just for documentation. And so this is really somewhat fairly small. But then again, where does the money go? Who gets the money? How does the auditor handle the money? I mean, what, what's the process? If I'm the clerk and somebody comes in and I charge them a dollar already and then I charge them what are ordinance, how is that, how is that sent through and who does it, who is it sent to? And where does it go?
There are specifically, as far as like the recorder's office, the clerk's office, the statute determines exactly where that money goes. For these general copies, it would go into the general fund because it's assuming that's what you pay for ADA, for your copiers and paper and things like that. So it's, it's a way for the county to recoup some of the cost.
But in light of those offices already charging, couldn't we not have opted them out of this, out of this ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Couldn't we not have opted those two offices out of this ordinance?
It is, this is, that's why I put it in two separate sections. One is for general copies. The others is related to each of those office and cites the statute that they would follow for that office.
Which they already do. Which they already follow. So you're not trying to add on to those?
No.
Okay, then you, then I'm confused. So you're saying that the clerk's office and recorder's office don't have to add this charge on to the document?
Not on to the documents that they already statute sets. But are some documents that would be documents as far as their budget? Things like that, how offices run. Those kinds of copies would be in the general because they're not listed in the statute. They're not a deed or.
Thank you for that explanation. I wasn't, just wasn't clear to me. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I, that does touch on a, kind of a point that I was going to ask about. And that is maybe, maybe, and I know this is just a draft in my opinion. So I really appreciate your work on this up to this point. And I think as far as input's concerned, maybe there should be something a little different in the structure that kind of touches on what Nick is mentioning. And that is maybe another whereas first, that basically states that, you know, unless otherwise. maybe another whereas first, that basically states that, um, you know, unless otherwise specified by statute already, or for these particular departments, like you've mentioned, then these fees apply. And then that means that the final catch-all is the fees we set in the general section, kind of in the reverse. So, we have identified the need to have the fees, that there was an ordinance by the commissioners, et cetera. But then, you know, if there is already some statutory, uh, statutorily mandated fee or set fee for any kind of office or whatever, that that would be first, that would be followed. And then if that doesn't exist, then what's left is what we set and what we charge per the record. The other part to that would be, uh, another thing Nick mentioned was where does the revenue go? I don't know logistically if it makes a difference, uh, but we should probably include where, where the revenue is going. If that is meant to be, everything goes back to the general, then we probably should have a, a portion in here that states that. If it's not to be that way, and it's supposed to go back to the department of origin, for instance, I would want to make sure that if the building department and planning department had a request and they, uh, would otherwise charge thirty dollars to recoup the cost, that that thirty dollars would be revenue, miscellaneous revenue back to their department and their fund, not the county general, y- you know, as an example. EMS would be similar, you know, if there's a records fee, et cetera. And I don't know what that ordinance specifically states, but I would hope that that particular miscellaneous revenue goes back to them, you know, and kind of keep that, that set, if that's what the council wants to do. It may not be worth doing or, or breaking it out that way, but it's a thought, I think.
For the funding, um, for the payment of copier fees and paper, is each department allotted a line item for that, or does it just come out of, uh, the general fund and everybody is out of the same?
It's messy. Uh, it is a little messy on the origin. But generally, if you have a specific, kind of working in the reverse on the simple stuff, if you have a particular fund, like the health department, or you have elections and registration or EMS, those are kind of a, a, an easy choice. Now, when you get into auditor versus recorder and that kind of thing, generally, it's a part of the general fund, but there are a couple of exceptions and some shared costs in there too. So, but I think that, that's a good question, that we need to maybe make sure we have the right answer on. So, I think Nick was kind of touching on that.
There's monthly report of collections that is submitted or turned in with amounts of money that were collected. And the department that turns them in, whoever it is, whether it's EMS or health department or recorder or whoever, when their monthly reports come in and how much they've collected and they give us a check for whatever they have, or if it's there, it goes into the miscellaneous line items or specifically if they have individual funds, um, it's already broke out that way. That's already...
So, you do have some kind of a roadmap?
Mm-hmm.
But I think we need to make sure we connect that in here somewhere, that that's how that's gonna happen. Uh, because we also don't want some internal conflict that, well, that money's supposed to be my money or my department's money and not this one's, and, and we don't want to create a problem, I, I think, if we can avoid it. Is labor also something that could be recoupable? No, okay. So, that was one of my questions. So, if it took someone twenty hours to comply with the request, and that's all they worked on, there's really no way to kind of make up for the lost time there in that situation?
No, part of the duty of a public, uh, agency is to fulfill record requests. However, if they are, uh, oppressive like that, would, would be twenty hours, um, you don't have to, there's not a time frame.
Yeah, it's a reasonable expectation of response.
You have to get a notice that you received the request and when you would anticipate being able to fulfill that request.
Okay.
But on something like that, it may be twenty weeks, because they can only work on an hour a week.
And that's fair enough, yes.
Or something like that, so...
What about if there's, uh, is it all centered around the individual being in person, coming into the office, receiving the printouts or copies that they requested, and then being done with the request? Or is there any element involving delivery or use of a third party like mail, UPS, FedEx? And, and if there's cost to shipping or cost to that, then would that be something that we would need to charge for or identify in here?
They mark on the actual request form, it marks in-person, by mail or...
See, has US mail is one of the choices. So, if we spend, are gonna spend, uh, twenty dollars on a, on a thick parcel to send this to that person, is that twenty dollars recoverable through the records request fees?
Through this ordinance, no, because, and honestly, I, it, those kind of requests are extremely rare. So, it, to me, it seems like it'd just be the cost of doing, doing business, um, because it, again, it would be pretty rare. Most of the time, they want it electronically, um, or, you know, they, they pick it up or it's a few pages, so a scan, uh, helps. Actually, my understanding is, except for a few individuals in the county, there are very few record requests that are made.
Yeah, and I know it's one of those manage the rule, not the exception situations. I can understand that, but you know how things end up. And, and in the environment, again, nothing against public records, no one's trying to hide anything, we're all gonna do whatever we can to answer requests and things, but I think we have to be realistic and practical, thinking about, you know, what could end up becoming more of a time sink and a cost sink, or maybe even just a nuisance request or something to, just to, to gum up the system, I think. And that's what we want to be careful of. And if someone does come in and they want packets of this and packets of that, and it's, ends up being legitimate, and we're looking at a hun- hundred dollars in mailing costs or shipping costs, and it's something that could be recoverable, I think that we should add a sentence or a section in the ordinance that allows for that. And especially if the form has US mail as an option. Otherwise, you can eliminate that option on the form, and just, it has to be picked up in person or done electronically, and then eliminate the whole delivery obligation, you know, not even offer that choice. So, I, again, food for thought, I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I, it just, those are the things that come to mind when I'm reviewing this kind of ordinance.
But Anton, if he's gonna rewrite the ordinance, why don't we look at him, legitimate costs, mailing costs?
Yes.
I mean, we're gonna send this out and put fifty-five cents with a stamp or a dollar ten, why shouldn't we recover that? So, if we have it in the ordinance, if somebody wants it sent to them, we can just say, okay, it's whatever per fee plus mailing.
Sure, I don't think that's unreasonable, but...
I mean, if that's, if it's legal, like, if it's legal to charge mailing costs, I don't, I don't know.
Yes, I believe that...
Would be?
Would be.
Okay.
And would it have to be paid prior to mailing? Because we've had some recent issues with that too. I mean, obviously, you would have to give them the cost or tell them, you know, it's gonna be at some amount of dollars, you need to mail us a check or, I mean, we don't do anything electronically or anything, so...
I didn't bring the formal guidelines with me, but I, um, do believe in the guidelines that, uh, it says that there has to be payment in advance.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point there. So, you'd have to have, they would have to commit, which is on the form, you know, do they want it in person or they want it? If someone selects US mail on the form, and then you're gonna catch that. And then, you, you'd have to estimate or have some idea of what that postage might end up being for that. That might be the more rare choice, because in-person is easy, but, um, you'd have to have some kind of a, an estimation of that. And there are those packages that are kind of a, a flat rate type shipping for so much, up to so many pounds or whatever, and, you know, that could be an easier way to solve that, because it doesn't matter whether you have a half-inch-thick packet or two, three inches, it's still the same rate. So, there could be some, something there that could link up. But that's, I think that's a, a good part we'd want to include in there.
So, what do we want action, do we need that?
Well, I think we just need another, just finish up, get another, get a final draft for April, uh, and make sure to incorporate what we've talked about. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, just postpone, uh, consideration here of the ordinance draft until our April meeting. Will that be enough time for a follow-up? Okay. And then go from there.
Okay, motion...
I second.
Seconded by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance...
Yeah, appreciate your work on that.
All right, ordinance confirmation summary. Any packets?
So, this includes, uh, what normally would have been your February batch, and then the March batch. They are all together. And I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, accept those into the record and have the president sign off on them.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Oh, I'll check it then.
Seconded by Pearl. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay. All right, um, Sheila, do you want to address the WTH?
We've received another WTH bill. Um, this is the one that there was a debate on, who was paying last year, and they were threatening to in, or cut off our service because it wasn't paid. I believe it was fifty-three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Yeah, a thousand three hundred and nineteen.
It was also discussed in budget hearings, but it was never settled who was or wasn't gonna pay it, and we've received another bill for this year. It has to be paid from somewhere.
Uh, why don't we take it up, Riverdale?
So, is it gonna be a recurring thing though, or it, yeah, so...
Somebody else has already handled it.
It was discussed in, in budget hearings, but it was never completely decided it was gonna go, whether it was the building or Kathleen talked about it at nine-one-one, and it was never added specifically to something.
Well, we never budgeted in the budget, so now we owe it for last year.
No, this was this year.
This year.
Last year, the auditor's office ended up paying the amount, because we couldn't afford to lose the WTH service. So, we had extra funds in our contract services and paid it. Now, it needs paid again.
This is for a whole year?
This is for this year.
Right, it's for April first of this year.
I think that we paid out of Riverdale, we addressed this, uh, budget time, and get it in somewhere, if you'd like to break it down, however.
Yeah, that's probably the best we can do right now.
Motion made by Nick.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Anton. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, elected official and department head comments.
Sheila, you were gonna bring up timbers. Oh, oh, different subjects, okay. I just want to make sure you didn't lose sight of that.
We also, yes, um, on the timber sales, we have received, our timber money's in for this year, we just need to do the distribution. In the past, it has been done by the council, but I've been told it's actually commissioners to, to appropriate where it comes from, so I'm gonna put it on the commissioner's next agenda. I'll pull out the amounts that were received and, and however they want to propose it to be broken down, we'll have to bring it back to the council to appropriate into the exact line items and funds to be paid out of.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that in the past, it just somehow was through us, but then, at some point, someone mentioned it's actually a commissioner decision, which is fine. But, uh, I don't know if it would really need an appropriation from the council, because , uh, it's a pass-through from the state. It's just whether, it's just whether you pay it to the fire departments extra or not, I think would be, what, whatever the commissioners decide on, on that, so...
I'll print out the last few years of who got what, so that they have a community sheet, so...
Is it better than last year?
Yeah, what was the dollar amount?
I don't remember what fund it is.
Usually, there's a letter.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't remember where. I know it was received into the county general, but I don't remember the dollar amount. I will, I'll find it and email it to you. The other thing is, Vera Hughes was in earlier, and they need an appointment, a council appointment for the alcohol and beverage board.
Right. The same thing.
Play there, Berman.
Baron is a, what, trustee?
Yes.
So, we cannot do both. So, does anybody have anybody in mind?
Um... On the alcohol board?
Mm-hmm.
I think we should advertise.
Your what?
Does that appointment have to be made tonight?
Doesn't have to be, and, and you guys can think about it, if you find somebody else in the general public that you would want to...
Well, I know a man, but I don't want, I mean, I need to ask you, if you dare to know.
Do we want to rely on just some suggestions, or do we want to just advertise, uh, for, for interested parties? Give the public an opportunity to, you know, weigh in?
I think that's, that's a good idea, Anton, the public at least...
And we could still suggest, but...
Yeah, the public can at least say that, you know, they're, they may offer to the public.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we authorize the auditor then to advertise a simple, you know, not a help wanted, but you know, that there's an opportunity for the board and, uh, the councils consider appointment to that board and have, you know, a letter of interest submitted by a certain timeline and something that'll work for our April meeting.
On the floor, is there a second?
No, second.
Second received. Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, motion carried. Okay, now elected official, department heads, anybody? Okay, public tournament. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm Jeff Morris, I live in Owen County. So, I wanted to talk for a little bit about this, uh, public records request ordinance fees. I wanted to give a little input on that. I am, I'm a frequent requister of public records from the Division of Forestry. And, uh, they have a very nice process. You throw out a form, you send it in, they respond, they tell you how many pages, they charge you a flat rate if they send it to you electronically, except if it fits on a CD or you go on an email, it's fifty cents. To the point that came up about the mail, they won't send it out until you go pay them. And you have to pay them a check or a money order, they don't take care of it.
And it's at cost, Jeff, whatever the cost is, is what they charge. Okay.
Right, and ten cents a page. So, this has clearly been in the scope of a pu- a public entity to do or government to do. I got a little confused about the whole certification fee. I've never heard of a certification fee. I mean, I've heard of, of, of fees for doing a, a notary, but I've never heard of a certification fee, so that, that was confusing. And, and I would encourage the council and the commissioners to be, um, easy to deal with on this topic, okay? And the reason I would encourage that is that, uh, in my reckoning, and nobody on these boards is part of this story, but in my reckoning, we had two commissioners indicted, we've had an auditor who's been on the federal penitentiary, we've had another situation with another auditor, we've had, we've had a significant issue with respect to funding in this county. And, um, so it needs to be, yeah, this is something we're doing, but it's not something we're doing because we're trying to make it more difficult for you to figure out what we're doing, right? So, you've got to make this as smooth as possible and as transparent as possible, and not as a new, that's my input on the topic. So, please think about that as you look forward to doing, to doing this work in terms of, of what you're doing, uh, because, you know, this, this is the opportunity to be transparent as possible and go forward in there. Again, it's not something that's unheard of, state does all the time, other counties certainly will sculpt the law, and I urge you guys to...
Good point.
...be careful about that. So, that's, um... So that's, that's all.
Right, thanks.
Appreciate your input.
Yeah.
And real quick, follow-up to, to our attorney on, on the certification fee. Can, maybe you and Sheila can give us another example of what that is? It'd be nice to have a little clarity.
The recorder sometimes has to certify a true copy.
Okay.
Okay?
It's just basically saying this is true and accurate of the original? Because maybe they need it for some legal purpose?
Yeah, yeah, like a lender or whomever.
Does that help, Jeff, on that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
But if I'm asked for the minutes of the meeting, the commissioners meeting, I don't want to pay a certification fee discussion.
It's only a request.
It's requested by whom? By the question?
By the question.
Okay, fine.
Perfect, when the records are.
Okay, fine. And, and, and speaking of that, if you can find some money somewhere to re-institute the posting of agendas and minutes that just fell off the list in twenty nineteen. You can look on the website. Everything stopped in the twenty nineteen. There's no agendas, no minutes, no nothing. And I think it was a SharePoint site, so I think it's not that. I don't know. I've been talking for a long time, so, thank you.
Yeah, I know the website has been brought up. I'm sure commissioners have heard this too, right? And hopefully, there's some discussion on that to at least provide the basics for the public. A place where, a landing place where they can go to pull up that information. And it doesn't have to be a real flashy website, just a place people can go, so.
We actually have it and I've contacted our, our IT gentleman and he's referred me on to the lady that is now handling that. And she's supposed to be getting with me. I believe in, just a couple of weeks ago, she got with you, Chris, didn't she? The, the lady, the IT, to get his up and going. And, and so I hope that's on the radar.
Any other public comment?
I have one. This PayCorps or Timekeeper or whatever, we really do need something. But we've got to explore all the options. And you guys don't even know what the process is. I mean, I'm not pointing fingers, but you really do need to understand what it is and how it's figured. And, and, you know, take apart, I've seen Anton down in the auditor's office before. I've seen Polly, seen, you know, the rest of you. But to really get your teeth into what's going on and that every day thing, you, you know, I encourage that. Because we could save money in the long run. We could save time unless there's money, right? I want my weekends back.
I bet.
So, yeah, anything that will streamline the process and make it easier.
And it's not harder, right?
The commissioners too.
I'll definitely take you up on that.
Yeah, please.
And, and, and what Beth isn't telling you is she found out this morning that she has to have surgery on Wednesday. So I have a boy that could be out for up to six weeks. And so here we are again. I've got to get somebody in there. I just, we have not gone any further with interviews and, and stuff because I wasn't sure if the position was going to be kept where we were going with PayCorps. But I hope within the next couple of days to have somebody and go it up.
You will, you are, and I personally agree on that.
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate it. I know you need it.
All right, is there any other public comment? Okay. Sheila, anything, anything else?
We have the proactive MD, just their monthly report. And I don't know why. I believe they were asked by the commissioners and Anton at one point to provide us updates. And they've been, this is the third month in a row that we've got them. So it's been really nice to have them know what is going on. So I don't, other than that, I'm done.
Okay. Anything else? Somebody has anything else?
I hope Andy is enjoying himself down there.
Like, all the joy.
Yeah, I'm not going to say anything.
Anton, if I make a motion, would you second it that our next meeting will be there?
Yeah, we can have it advertised.
All right.
All right.